Dear Lord, thank for this day and our many blessings. Lord, just thankful this opportunity to come out and conduct county gives, Lord. Give us knowledge to serve the Lord and may we make decisions best for all citizens of Abreu County, Lord, but most of all be with those who are lost, Lord, who know every need, in Christ's name, amen.
Amen.
Would that soft sand and the flesh of the palm like he led us in that.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, we'll move right along. Three point two A, Proclamation to the Lord.
We do not have any men of chairman.
Three point two B, Public Comment.
That's my focus. Drew Tashner is going to speak for us.
All right, come, is he not going to come and do that?
Yeah. Hey, everyone. My name is Drew Tashner. I wanted to thank y'all for letting me come out here and speak today. If, as you can tell, I'm a Boy Scout. I'm working on my Eagle Scout rank right now. I'm a member of troop, uh, Boy Scout Troop Eight 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 of Newland. And my Eagle Scout project is a bike radio for grades K through five on August thirteenth at the Avery County High School future parking lot. I think, uh, all I'm really asking, uh, here is just for y'all to get the word out. Let people at your church know that it's happening or, um, any, any nephews or grandchildren that you know that are in the age range that I'm asking for, just, just ask them or if they want to come out, just so they can learn about bike safety. The first thing they're, when they, what they'll learn about when they come to the bike radio is, uh, is I'll teach them the stuff in this pamphlet. In the pamphlet, it teaches you how to wear a helmet, what to wear while riding a bike, how to ride at night, an ABC check. An ABC check is an air, brakes, chain, cassette, and crank check. And this is very important for riding a bike to prevent certain incidents from happening, uh, while riding a bike. Uh, other things I'll teaching, be, be teaching is signaling, uh, how to, uh, signaling, traffic laws, how to ride on the road, how to ride on sidewalks, all, all sorts of stuff is, is a good, very good knowledge in this book. Uh, after I teach them the safety in this book, um, I will send them through a bicycle opposite of course, and in the course it'll have certain challenges like how to weaving through cones, uh, stopping, yielding, going around roundabouts. Uh, this basic, uh, this, it'll, I just want them to feel comfortable riding a bike, uh, in the, in the course. And a- after they finish the course, there'll be a bicycle raffle, and, and the bicycle raffle will be helmets and bicycle pumps and other equipment. Um, I, I can't ask for money, but, um, I, I would, I would, I would gladly accept donations for the bicycle raffle, um, for the, for the raffle. If, if I, if I do happen to get, um, more donations, I will possibly buy bicycles that I will give to kids that, let's say their bikes aren't as, they're not up to, they're, they're not as good as they should be. So I, I would supply them with a new bike or a helmet and anything that they need. And if, if a kid shows up and they have a bike, but they don't have a helmet, I'll, I'll, I will supply them with a helmet. Uh, I'm, I'm, I'm very, I'm, I'm a big supporter of wearing helmets for riding a bike. I've been through, I've been in many bike accidents where I've had a helmet on and I've hit my head and I've, I've just thought, if, what if I didn't have that helmet on? Um, so I'm a big supporter of wearing helmets. Um, so I just want to thank y'all again. And if, uh, would, if you guys, do you know of anybody that would like to make a donation, just, um, ask, uh, send the check to Troop Eight 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 of Newland, North Carolina. And if you have any more questions, uh, I have, uh, flyers right here, and on the flyers, it has an email on there. It's drewsbikeradio@gmail.com. And if you can't remember that, just please take a picture of it. Um, there's one more thing.
What's the hours? It's gonna be the eighteen?
Yes, sir. Twelve to two.
Not the eighteen.
No, the thirteen, thirteen.
Thirteen, sorry. I wrote that wrong.
And if you have any more questions that you can't think of now, just email, uh, me on that email, please. And, uh, and I, if, if you, if your kid or nephew wants to come to the bike radio, uh, that email is, I, you can register your kid on that email, 'cause I, I would like to have an estimate of how many kids I'm expecting, so, so I know what to prepare for. Um, but that'd be greatly appreciated if you sign up, if you register your kid through that email. Uh, thank you, guys, for letting me come out here to speak.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Twelve to.
I have these flyers that I will give to each one of you and then they're being about to get us what's on.
Good job.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else that wants to speak in public comments? All right, we'll move right along to three point three, our High Country Caregivers. Jacob Williams, is that right?
Willis.
Or Will.
Mr. Willis.
Martha, thank you.
I believe I've seen him.
Yeah, thank you and the board for having me. I appreciate that young man raising money for bike helmets. It's obvious me and Phillip and Dennis rode them a little more than the rest of you back when they didn't have helmets. So.
Never hear anything important though.
Yeah, yeah.
He never said he's gonna teach me to ride a bike, dude.
So, appreciate what he had to say. Appreciate y'all having me here and hearing just a little bit about what we're doing in Avery County. And there's a couple of things I'm really excited about that I just kind of want to put on y'all's radar. And I appreciate your support and especially, um, county manager's support and you're all's involvement with us and helping open doors for us to serve your community and the children in your community has been exceptional. And I just appreciate everything you guys do and everything you stand for and appreciate the job that you do for the citizens of Avery County. And I also appreciate that tax decrease, which helped me as a property owner in Avery County. Um, High Country Caregivers was established in two thousand six by Brenda Reese while she was working, uh, at Cannon Hospital System. And since then, we've grown into an agency that primarily works with grandparents that are raising their grandchildren due to the opioid crisis. And we have a few programs that are operating in Avery County that I want to briefly go over, and then I'll tell you the, the couple of exciting things that we've received some grants for that's going to be coming y'all's way. Uh, but our Relatives as Parents program is basically our support group program where we meet at First Baptist Cross Nor, um, the last Tuesday of every month from four thirty until seven o'clock, and we provide a meal for those families. And then we provide recreational opportunities for the kids and a support group setting for the grandparents where they learn, um, about things like codependency, addictive behavior, um, how to deal and cope with children that have been, uh, born on drugs, uh, how to deal with kids that have been displaced from families, and how to deal with children that have experienced extreme trauma. And so that's what our support groups focus on, uh, while, all the while, the children get to go play and we help them with their homework and that kind of thing. So that's our Relatives as Parents program. Uh, our Kinship Navigation Program works like this. Uh, we have a full-time social worker that works within Avery County, and so when DSS or the schools or another family or somebody in the community calls us, if that family is in crisis, uh, then we provide emergency need items, uh, for that family. if that family is in crisis, uh, then we provide emergency need items, uh, for that family, like cribs, um, car seats, di- different things that they may need. And many, many times those families come to us in need of legal assistance. In other words, it's not a DSS case, the, the, the parents no longer feel they're able to raise the kid and they just drop the kid off at grandma's house and, and basically leave. And so we pay one hundred percent, uh, of the families that come to us, their initial consultation fee. And then on a sliding scale, we pay for their legal fees. Um, we do not turn any family away and we accept any family regardless of how old or young they are. And so those legal fees do things like this. Say you get your grandkid or your niece or your nephew and you don't have anything legally saying you can have them, well, then you can't register them for school, you can't take them to the doctor, you can't do the things you need to do to take care of the child. So we partner with Robin Barkin Brooks and they do half of the work pro bono. They donate half of it to our agency, the other half we pay for, like I said, on a sliding scale. The other thing we do is our social worker works with those families in Avery County. Every single month, we touch base with every family we serve. And during that time, we find out what their needs are, so we, we hook them up with the resources that are available in our community, such as food resources, um, help paying electric bills, clothing, whatever essential need items it is so that that family can keep that child in that home. We do things all, like pay the first month's rent and deposit for a family to get into a bigger place so that they can accommodate those children. Uh, basically whatever that child needs or that family needs to be able to keep that kid at home. Because our belief is this, and I believe this is true, um, as long as that's a stable environment for that child, you're better off being raised by family than you are in a children's home or even in a foster care setting. So our goal is to keep that child with, with family, um, and see that child grow up. One of the wonderful success stories we have is we had a kid that participated in our program for six years that's now at Virginia Tech on a full scholarship, uh, full band scholarship. And we were able to pay for those fees, uh, for band and ROTC. And so, uh, that kid came right from right here in Avery County at Avery High School. The other thing that we do is called Children's Wish. And we identify what the child is good at or what they're interested in. And we help them accomplish those goals through that program. So in other words, if the child wants to play football, we pay for the recreational fees, we pay for the pleats, we pay for the uniform. Uh, if they want to do dance lessons, we'll pay for dance lessons. If they want to do gymnastics, we'll pay for gymnastics. We're paying right now for therapeutic horseback riding for two kids, one of which is in Avery County. So that's a part of what we do. We also, through the Children's Wish list, provide every single kid that participates in our program with two hundred and fifty dollars a piece worth of Christmas presents every Christmas. And so last year, we delivered over a hundred Christmas presents and we also delivered a turkey, uh, to every home. Uh, that's at Christmas. And then the other really cool thing that we do, uh, came to the idea of Coach Jerry Moore, who's on our board, of doing camps for kids, because many of the grandparents that we serve are younger and they work full-time jobs. And so in the summer, the children have nowhere to go. So Coach started raising money and we had our inaugural golf tournament this year, the Coaches Golf Tournament, and we were able to provide over a hundred camp scholarships for kids, uh, over the countywide area that we serve. And so what that does is that helps that child be able to have something to do during the day while grandma's at work or aunt and uncle's at work or whoever's raising that child, and it keeps them from having to be home alone. Uh, the other thing that we do with that money is we offer scholarships to a therapeutic camp that deals with traumatic experiences, uh, that children face coming out of crisis. And it's a trauma-informed camp, uh, and the cost of that's about seventeen hundred and fifty bucks per child. And this year, we were able to send seventeen children, uh, to therapeutic camp. Uh, and that's, that, I think that's awesome. The two cool things that we're doing in Avery County that I think you guys are gonna really like and be interested in, and the reason I'm giving you this information, we need kids in Avery County. And Phillip's helped, Cindy's helped, and we, we need churches and we need DSS and we need the schools to refer some kids to us. We are growing in Avery, but my goal is to double the number of kids we have in Avery. And so right now, we're serving fifty-two kids in Avery. And I know there's a lot more out there that need our help. Uh, but the cool thing we're doing is, one, we're doing a hiking adventure program for kids. And it's through Tall Galton and it's called Snake Root, Snake Root Eco Tours. And he's doing adventure hikes in Avery Mitchell in Yancee County. And the Avery Adventure Hikes are gonna happen this fall, Grandfather Mountain, Beach Mountain, Sugar Mountain. And we're doing an overnight camp for kids, uh, which is gonna be at Back to the Farm Bible Camp, which is on Old Beach Mountain. And so it's gonna be three weekends of camp for those kids. And during that time, they're going to get to do some really cool experiences. We're partnering with Buckeye Recreation Center, uh, we're partnering with the YMCA, we're partnering with Grandfather Mountain. The kids are gonna have a really good time. But the really cool thing we're doing that's gonna be starting in December with kids in, uh, Avery County is we're going to start a business incubator program for the kids in our program. So what that's going to entail is this, we're gonna teach kids how to sew, how to bake, how to cook, how to balance a checkbook, how to open a bank account, um, how to change a tire, how to change the oil in a car. Every single month, we're gonna have a different program that teaches a kid a different skill set to be able to live life and learn the things they need to be able to function in life and, and prepare them hopefully for adulthood and society. And that's gonna include, too, uh, tours of Mayland, uh, we're gonna tour the main campus and, um, the engineering program that he has in Yancee. It's going to include, uh, them spending, uh, half a day there, seeing what programs Mayland has, meeting with the Mayland counselor, uh, having lunch, all of that's in the works in this incubator program. And it's going to start, like I said, it's gonna start for Avery County kids full bore in December. And we're, we're super excited about it. And I want you guys, if you will, to help us get the word out, tell, tell the community and see, tell them they can call us. Phillip's got my information, Cindy does, I'll get you all, uh, my cards.
DSS has all your information, so.
DSS has it, but these kids, I think it'll be life-changing for a lot of these kids. And so what we're gonna do is they're gonna participate in that. And then next September, we're gonna have a fashion show that, that our kids show you the clothes that they made, what they sew, uh, what they bake, they're gonna do all of that kind of thing to wrap up that program. And then we're going to help them learn how to sell that stuff and learn how to sell their clothes and make their own money. So.
How many counties does the program cover, Jacob?
We serve five counties. We serve Ash, Watauga, Avery, Mitchell, Yancee. Avery is our second biggest county that we serve behind Watauga, of course.
And the partnership that Jacob and his group have with, with DSS is, uh, second to none. So I appreciate your efforts and I thank you.
Appreciate you guys. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
All right, we'll move right along, three point three B, our subdivision approval for cabins at Equis Nest.
Good afternoon, Commissioners.
Good afternoon.
Good afternoon, good afternoon. Uh, Derek, you have the, the map correct?
Yes, sir.
The document that the Avery County Plan Board has adopted by motion July twenty-fifth, uh, twenty twenty-two, approved and plat- presented before you today with all the members present voting in favor of. Now, this is lots, uh, C one twenty and one twenty, uh, C one twenty-nine. Avery County Planning Department has inspected the site and all sedimentation control best management practices are installed and approved, approved by the gr- grading plan and it has been followed. Uh, no off-site sedimentation has occurred during the time sequence, uh, of this phase of the development. Road whiffs and emergency vehicle turnarounds meet the guidelines of Avery County Subdivision Ordinance. Uh, the sub, uh, Surveyor Judd, Judson Howell has surveyed the road grades and do not exceed eighteen percent as required by, by our ordinance. Uh, it's a quick, as the Commissioners have any questions at this time, you can direct them toward myself or Mr. McCann.
Does anybody have any questions?
I noticed the, uh, lot of the adjacent property is the same person that presenting the, that, uh, is on the, uh, originator of these two ma- these two plaits, they have adjacent properties. There's, it says remaining land, remaining land and, uh, remaining, so there's, there's somewhere several parcels around this particular one. Is this, is this all single, single dwelling?
Single family.
Same, same family, yes, sir.
Yeah, what this is, uh, this is, um, this was cleaned up, so it's only two lots. It was already pre-approved, the, uh, or done approved, the first phase of this section. There's a, a back phase, it'll be next month, that's about fifteen lots that'll wrap this up. And that's what we're, that'll be taken in, that remaining land that you're seeing on the remaining. Yeah, but it was, this was a part of the, the C law section, I think we had about, um, I think it was about forty-five initial lots in this section. And this is, the two lots that didn't get on the last one, it cleaned up the second phase. And then there'll be a third phase coming next month and all that.
Yeah, it's gonna be, there's one master plan that was approved by the Plan Board. And then they took, uh, as a preliminary, and then they brought these three phases back as, as, uh, as, and to be, as they can, everything in Avery County site specific, as they can survey it and, you know, lay it out on the ground, that's good, good building sites out. So this is, this is a part two of, of, uh, a, a, a preliminary plan that was, uh, approved February twenty-eighth.
All right, do I hear a motion to approve the cabins at Equis Nest lots?
Flagrant.
All in favor, raise your right hand.
Let me catch up there.
That's all.
Ms. Martha, I'll get you to sign that.
All right.
Yeah. Everybody's signed except, uh, you, Chairman.
Thank you, board.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Ms. McCann. Thank you, Morgan.
All right, we'll move right along to three point three C, Limbo Heights subdivision, phase two, fifty-six through seventy-six.
Uh, yes, Madam Chairman, this is a final plat submission also by the Vanderig Investment LLC. Uh, this, of course, is out there in Monozuma, top of the hill. Uh, this is a phase two, again, uh, at the July twenty-fifth meeting, the Plan Board approved this, uh, this phase of, of the subdivision, uh, in, in favor of Limbo Heights subdivision phase two, lots fifty-six to seventy-six. The Avery County, again, the Avery County Plan Department has inspected the site and all sedimentation and control and best management practices are installed and all, all approved grading, uh, of the approved grading plan has been followed. No off-site sedimentation has occurred during the sequence of this phase being developed. The road whiffs and emergency vehicles turnarounds meet the guidelines of the Avery County Subdivision Order, Ordinance. We have Surveyor, uh, Jay Schott.
I'm not the surveyor, but I'm one of the developers.
I'm one of the developers, I'm sorry. Well, I'll just give him a, uh, a raise. Uh, one of the developers is here, Mr. Jay Schott, he has the plat. Uh, you guys have a copy of it in your, in your, uh, your, your book there. Uh, Brook Engineering has certified that all road grades do not exceed eighteen percent. Uh, if the Commissioners have any questions, address them to Mr. Schott or to myself.
Is there a master plan for this development?
Uh, this is, this, uh, this is the master plan, phase two.
No.
It's, it's only one, one. The other phases were back in, uh, Limbo Height was way back in the day.
I think it was in the seventies.
In the seventies?
Mm-hmm.
Right. This is the master plan.
Where is the master plan?
It's, uh, when the register deed, sir. Be on file with register deeds. Looks like it's, uh, book deed five sixty-four, page one nineteen, nineteen forty-two. Then you have also a book fifty-seven, page fifty-three.
For the, uh, for phase development, it says, the master plan shows the entire proposed subdivision. Said the following, all phases of subdivision clearly marked, proposed density, type of, these places utilities, term tables, pass a possible timetable for all phases of development.
Okay, uh, I guess Mr. Lacy and I overlooked that. Uh, we felt this was a master plan, the original plan for, uh, Limbo Heights subdivision was, like I say, back in, back in the, in the seventies. And of course, it's in deed book three nineteen, nineteen, there's a page fifteen ninety-two in a good, uh, PB thirty-seven, page fifty-three, fifty-four. Do you want, wanna, do you want us to try to pull those up for you and get them to you or?
Well, I would like to see, I mean, the whole, our, our whole discussion about subdivision is over and over and over is how we do not get an overall view of the entire project.
Yes, sir.
And there's, I, I drove up there, there's eighty-some lots marked off up there, you know?
Right.
So there's got to be a plan for those and there's new roadways cutting in and new accesses.
Right.
And it just seems to me that, uh, just like with a lot of our other developments, you know, there's not a, an idea of the entirety of it, we just get pieces and parts and not the sum total. And, um, as we try to plan and, and try to look ahead, there's a lot of difference between these twenty lots and eighty lots, you know?
Yes, sir.
Um, I can show you on GIS what's there right now on my phone if you'd like. We didn't actually cut any, any roads, those roads were cut in originally in gravel. And we, all we did was come back in and, uh, pave those roads for the, for the existing subdivision. So we didn't actually do, that, that's the only work that we did up there. What's being proposed on phase two is just cut from the, the main drive that's been there for a long time. Would you all like to see what's on GIS?
Well, I can look at GIS, I'm, I would like to see a, a, a plan, a master plan, like we have, like this could be presented of the entire development, what you hope for, what you're looking to do. I mean, I don't think that's out of reason.
So are you wanting to see the recorded plaits on file? Or do you want us to recreate, re-survey everything out there, uh, to be able to put on a malar?
No, I'm not saying that.
Okay.
I'm saying that there, uh, a comprehensive plan of what you hope to do with this property would be appreciated.
And I just have a quick question, not, not to interject, but, um, what's presented says that she wanted to, is there another page? she wanted to, is there another page to this?
Oh, yeah, that's, that's your curb, that's your curb, that's your curb schedule. That's, that's, that's getting all your.
Yeah, it's the calls.
Yeah, that's your, that's your lead.
Individual calls, three individual.
Yeah, yeah, that's the calls, the curb station, stations between the lots and everything.
We absolutely wouldn't have that prepared. We were unaware that that was needed. I'm happy to go to the record of the deed of records and pull that right now and come back with it. Would you all mind considering giving us conditional approval with me coming back with that information?
And I'm not trying to be argumentative, I just think that, I mean, the ordinance clearly says that a master plan will be provided, you know, for the entire subdivision.
And I think all of us looked like, I got here what you're saying, and I'm not trying to be argumentative either, I, I think we missed, we probably missed that nuance of this was the master plan for this new part of the subdivision, and so, you know, I totally understand, I'm happy to go get what's been recorded out of register of deeds.
There's, there's, not, not just the plat map, but, you know, proposed density, I mean, it'll be eighty homes, hundred and twenty homes, you know, the type and location of any facilities, I mean, there's specifications that are clearly marked out in the ordinance as to what this was going to look like in ten years. And we don't, all we have is twenty lots.
Right.
That are not part of that, do not show the entirety of the, of the development.
Yeah, I'll, I'll take responsibility for that. As we reviewed it, and I had Mr. Lacy with the plan where we viewed it, we go down our checklist, and then on the final checklist, we didn't really see the master plan. I understand what you're saying, we need to, Mr. Schott, we need to get the, what's existing on the ground, which is, you know, in our, in our deed books and plat, and pages and stuff, and he wants a, a master plan, probably color coding this and then showing the original Phase One, and this is Phase Two, so that's, I'll, I'll take, I'll take the.
Are there any other land that's not developed after these, after that Phase One, which was recorded in the seventies, and this phase?
That's, this is it.
Takes care of the problem?
Yeah, that's it, all of it in its entirety.
Right, yeah, this is, all's to the, look at my arrow there, but yeah, well.
I don't see, well, we couldn't get conditional approval, I mean, on that, go ahead, let me get this out, but, or is that good?
I would really appreciate it, and I'll, I'll come back with that. Would you all let me go ahead and record and then, and then come back with this? That'd be fantastic.
I think that's, should be fine.
Well, once it's recorded, if he doesn't bring it, you've got an issue.
You won't let me do this?
I mean, I think that it.
I'll take care of it.
I mean, it would be quick, something relatively easy, I think, to have submitted, and I mean, if the board wanted to agree the condition, he said, is that was submitted to Mr. Burleson, he could be authorized to allow, decide it and let it be recorded.
Okay, whatever you, you don't need to.
I mean, I think that, I've covered everyone's concerns.
Right, I can.
I would have no problem with that, it's just that this is the same discussion we've had over and over and over about not having a total view of, of the developments as they, and the total impact that we're going to have. And doing it ten, twenty at a time, the, the, the sum impact is greater than the sum of the parts, and that's what we have to be looking for, that's my concern, and, you know.
Yeah, I, again, it's, it's my fault, I, I understand. I should have explained to you, we should have had an overall master plan, Mr. Schott, I, I take full responsibility for that. If you, if you'll preliminary approve it, then I'll, I'll do a subdivision approval stamp on the front page, just like I did on the second page, on the curve, on the curve, on your curve page, and your JED-atic markers and all that kind of good stuff, if that's what you want to do, and then go ahead and have Ms., Ms. Hicks find, sign it, Chairman Hicks to sign it, if you'd like to do that.
What you were talking about and shared, or would you rather wait for her to sign?
She could, I mean, Ms. Martha's readily available usually, I mean, she, Tommy could call her as soon as it's.
I'd be great, I'd be great.
And she can come by and sign.
We'll get it, and then Ms., Ms.
Okay, I'll, I'll be on the phone right after I leave here.
Right.
Make, to put something together that fits it all in one page, that shows all the total density for the community. Is there anything else specific that I need to have? Color, you want to be color coded, or what's new, what's, what's existing?
Not necessarily, I mean, I'm not asking for undue hardship on or anything like that.
I just want to make sure I do it the way you want.
Yeah, but the ordinance, I mean, what I asked for is all phases of the subdivision clearly marked, proposed density, proposed type and location of utilities, if there is any, proposed timetable for all phases of the development.
That's all complete, so, all right, is there any, can you get me a copy of what this read, like the ordinance or text me a picture of it?
Yeah, I'll, yeah, I'll go back to my office and get it, yeah, yeah, I will.
So do I have a motion that we approve?
I think your, I think your, your motion would be that, a motion to approve it upon the middle of the master plan to Mr. Burleson.
Okay, now you heard, walk, Michelle, stand right here.
Then I'll get it to.
I moved it real quick. If he holds the Malar, can we go ahead and have Martha sign?
She, she, she's available, she said she'd come by.
I live on roller speeds.
I stay in so much trouble, she'll be here.
Okay, we approve this plat proposal conditionally upon a master plan being presented to Mr. Burleson's office.
Right.
We've got a motion and a second.
All in favor, raise your hand.
Right. We'll have it at the planning department, and we'll let you know as soon as Mr. Schott gets to that master plan. Thank you very much.
Should I take the Malar or you go? You want to hold it?
All right, we'll move right along to three point three D, our tax inspiration report for standards.
Good afternoon, everyone. Start with the request for your approval for the collections total for July at seventy-one thousand, sixty-seven dollars and two cents.
So I moved your permit.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye. What kind of letter did you send out?
Well, we, we did send some final notices out that, that did impact.
Okay.
Served as motivation.
Okay.
I do have releases this month also for your approval, in the amount of four dollars and five cents.
I hear a second. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
And sales report, again, ninety-one sales for the month of July. Not included in those are probably twenty to twenty-five sales that were sold completely furnished, condominium units, rental homes, so on and so forth, so the number of sales that we're having is still just extraordinary. It eventually has to slow down. I would never wish for that, but it eventually has to slow down. So you can see we are slightly less than where we were last July, we had a hundred and four sales last July, so, so we are trending a little bit downwards, but not yet to what some of the national levels seem to be indicating, so. Any other questions or comments that I can offer or provide an answer to?
It's showing a trend that three of those sales were less than your tax payment.
Yeah, so we are, we are seeing a little bit of that come in. As you have seen for the first six, seven months of the year, the, the sales prices have been going up, so we are starting to see a couple more come into play where the, the sales prices are coming down a little bit, they're still elevated. But that's, you know, that, that is the peaks and valleys that come along with any real estate market. I, I think, in my personal opinion, we're slightly past the peak here, but it's just a question as to how steep of a decline we go into, hopefully not much of one, so. Also, we'll comment, as Commissioner Aldrich spoke to me before the meeting, the tax bills, the yearly love letter, as, as he put it, they, they have indeed hit the mail, so everyone be on the lookout and be excited to, to get your wonderful.
Pay early and pay often.
That's it, pay early, pay often, so, and hopefully that will, those will start trickling in.
If you won't pay mine early, I'll get you.
I, I will say this to go on the record, we, we do accept partial payments throughout the course of the year, you don't have to come in to file for payment agreements with us until such time as the due date in January has passed, so if you want to split this up into monthly payments, bi-weekly payments, we have some individuals that send us fifty dollars a week. We can take any type of partial payment that, that you would like to process through us, we're, we're very flexible on that, so, any of this that needs to be spread out, we certainly do take payments in many ways, shapes, forms, and fashions. All right, thank you all very much, I appreciate you all.
And our sympathy goes.
Thank you.
To your wife and you.
I will pass that on, thank you very much for that, appreciate that.
All right, three point four, Michelle, do you have any report today?
I do not have anything that requires the board's attention.
Oh, wait, three point three E, sorry, Ms. Martha.
Well, I jumped way down.
Yeah.
Okay, let's go back to.
Three point three E.
Yeah, I just told her.
I just jumped down there, all right. Three point three E, our resolution for the sidearm for Danny Phillips.
So, Board in front of you, you have a resolution to, Avery County Sheriff's Office has in its possession a sidearm being Sig Sauer P three sixty-five and nine millimeter, serial number six six F, FD one two oh one three for retired Sheriff Danny Phillips, whereas the county deems this surplus property, therefore, the Avery County Commissioners being at its regular meeting on August, on the first of August twenty twenty-two hereby resolves that the sidearm being the gun mentioned above with the same serial number is surplus and shall be awarded to retired Sheriff Danny Phillips for due consideration, and such sum being the amount of one dollar. This is the first day of August twenty twenty-two.
Do I hear a motion to, to our resolution?
I'll let you do the name, yeah. No, your permit.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you, Board.
Mr. Phillips, if he is today, congratulating him to retirement. All right. Since our county manager's been out, I don't know if he's got anything to say, but I'll see.
I guarantee he's got something to say.
Just a little bit, Board, and it's good to be back, and I just want to ask the public to be careful out there, COVID is out there, and yes, I've had it twice, but I believe if you do the right thing, you know, you can avoid it and be safe, so that, that's the main thing. Couple of changes with COVID. We're at a point in our, I don't know what to call it, protocol, that the state and the government is going to home test, so that is a big change. The testing clinic closed last Friday for the last time, so you are now encouraged to do home testing. I hope everyone received a home test in the mail from the federal government that was allowable. There will be home tests to be given away when the supply does outweigh the demand. Right now, the demand is out, has taken our supply, so right now, you're kind of, hope, ask a neighbor, ask someone that might have some home tests, because there's not any available with our local departments at this time. As soon as the shipment comes in, there's supposed to be millions of them in Raleigh, as soon as the change, things go rolling, we will try to get those out to different locations throughout the county, so that's a huge change for people. I think we're just gonna, it's time to take it to broke, you know, this is here, it's going to be with us forever, it's going to be like the flow or like some of our other pandemics, and we're going to learn to live with it and go to your local doctor or providers for, for the, for that care. But do know that Avery County will do its part and let you know, you know, when there are resources available. And I just want to thank the citizens for doing the last two years, two and a half years, three years, have been tough, and, you know, it's tests, we were the last county to get a positive case, so, you know, we, we've done our part, we wore our masks, we social distanced, we washed our hands, maybe we need to drive that up a little bit more, especially just following with school starting in two weeks. So, but if there are any questions, we still have our phone number, it gives you just a brief update, and if there are tests available, it'll let you know those locations, so that number is seven three three eight two seven three, or you can go on the county website to get information about COVID. Always want to talk about broadband when I have the opportunity in front of, in front of the public and, and to the board. So we did receive a great grant, we found that out on July eighteenth, we have not signed any paperwork with this grant as of yet, so we do not know details, but do know that Avery County was awarded a great grant through the state, and at our workshop that we had the week before my office changed with COVID, we decided that we, our next step will be going after one of the CAB grants. So as soon as the paperwork is signed for the great grant, then High County Council of Governments, Corey, who's helping us with our grants and our American Rescue Plan, the board has pledged that we will go after a CAB grant and hopefully take some more of that money and get more money for the county on broadband, so I will keep you posted. I know people get, get excited, and when you don't have a reliable internet at home, you know, it is, it is excitable, but it is going to take time. I apologize for the time that it's going to take to secure these grants and get the paperwork done, but do know that your government is working on broadband. Housing, which is another one of our issues, we did have our asset inventory on, two Fridays ago with the towns, the company is ready to do the water and sewer asset inventory, we'll see where we're at and what our needs are going to be in the near future, so that's going to hopefully help with the housing. And on the same afternoon, I did meet with a developer about some affordable housing, so they're not ready to share details yet, but do know that we are working on that as much as possible. And the only other reminder is in your packet, hazardous waste day, which is a big day when you can get rid of your paint and your pesticides and other, other things, that is coming up on the twenty-seventh of this month, and that will be from nine to three, and that information is on the website. So that's always a, a big day for solid waste. And that's all I have. And that's.
I would add one thing to what Philip said, I've experienced going to the pharmacy to get your test things. If you do have insurance, turn it in on it, and they will let you have as many as eight, and you don't, you won't have to pay on it, but if you don't, they are a fee that they'll ask you for twenty-five dollars. So that's good to know. All right, we'll move right along to our department's officer, Caleb Hohn.
Good afternoon, Board.
Good afternoon.
I just have six items for your consideration today, the first of which is a insurance reimbursement. The Solid Waste Department has received insurance reimbursement for the two thousand and ten Peterbilt, requests the Board approve the following budget amendment to debit auto supplies seven thousand, six hundred and sixty-five dollars and fifty-two cents, and to credit insurance reimbursements seven thousand, six hundred and fifty-five dollars and fifty-two cents.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
Say it.
All in favor, say aye. All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Thank you. Item number two, the sheriff's office has received an insurance reimbursement for the two thousand and twenty-one Chevy Tahoe. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit auto supplies, three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventeen cents, and to credit insurance reimbursements, three thousand, seven hundred and forty-nine dollars and seventeen cents.
Do I hear a second? All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number three, the Department of Solid Waste is requesting funding to purchase a tipping trailer and two forty-yard containers. These items were already planned during the budget process to be bought using fund balance. Request the board approve the following budget amendment to debit capital outlay dumpsters, twenty thousand dollars. Debit capital outlay equipment, a hundred and three thousand, five hundred, and to credit fund balance appropriated, one hundred, twenty-three thousand, five hundred. I will make a note on this, what was originally spoke about in the budget process was a walking floor trailer, and that was going to come in a little higher at a hundred and twenty thousand with the changing of landfills. The landfills that are in closest proximity to us can use a tipping floor trailer. And it's, they're cheaper than the walking floor and less mechanics that could fail in that process. So, that's why, that's one change over what we talked about during the budget workshop.
Do I hear a motion to approve?
So moved.
Do I hear a second?
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number four, the Department of Social Services has received eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents from the Adoption Promotion Program Fund to enhance adoption services in Avery County. The money was received on June thirtieth, twenty twenty-two, and will need to be rolled forward into the current fiscal year. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit special adoption incentives, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents, and to credit fund balance appropriated, eighteen thousand, eight hundred and fifty-nine dollars and seventy-six cents.
That came in on June thirtieth, I'm like, hey, why you didn't get it last? Three fifty-seven.
Yeah, exactly. If we could have had a special meeting, maybe we could have had that spent.
A little slow on the trigger there.
Move to approve.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number five, the Department of Central Dispatch is requesting funding to purchase Q plus for EMD. This is a quality performance review subscription that will provide expert case review and reporting for seventy-four cases per month. Request the board adopt the following budget amendment to debit maintenance contract, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars, and to credit fund balance appropriated, sixteen thousand, eight hundred and seventy-two dollars.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Item number six, the E nine one one department budgeted fifty thousand dollars for the purchase of a new generator to power Central Dispatch in the event of an outage. The actual quote came in at eighty-six thousand, seven hundred and eighteen dollars and thirty-seven cents. The E nine one one fund will cover eighty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents of this expense. Request the board to adopt the following budget amendment to debit capital equipment, E nine one one fund, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents, and to credit E nine one one fund balance appropriated, thirty-three thousand, four hundred and one dollars and sixty-four cents.
Second.
All in favor, say aye.
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 I snagged your leg there.
I was reading, sorry.
We're not going to let them, who do this this time, they're going to take this out of our nine one one. We have rabbis standing.
Yes.
I think they'll be calling us, telling us, slow bank.
All right, that is all I have for your consideration, unless you all have any questions for me. All right, thank you all.
Appreciate you.
Board, I just want to make a comment that the quality performance review for E nine one one and the new equipment is much needed, and I appreciate your all's support on that, we're going to be the best communication center that there is, so, thank you.
I went up the other day and looked at our new equipment there, the new desks and setup and everything, and it's.
Twelve-hour shift, you can stand up, you can sit down.
It's a, it's a slight upgrade over being held up.
Turn on your heat, turn on the air conditioner, right at your area, so.
Well, you know what that brings them, I want one next to everybody to see it, so we got to remember.
Yeah, they're pretty jealous, if you go see it, it's pretty nice.
Yeah, it's nice. All right. Three point four C.
Sorry, he was telling me something. You're probably smart.
I'm out of control.
Sorry, Ms. Martha.
Three point three C, no, three point four C. Our attorneys report, Michelle Paul.
I still do not have anything.
I need to get my glasses changed.
You want to pick up anything the last twenty minutes?
All right. Three point five, staff reports and requests.
You don't have any, Madam Chairman?
Three point six, do we have anything for closed session?
I do not have anything.
Three point seven, approval of minutes, and Cindy's been working real hard to get the minutes called up. We have made the fifth twenty twenty-two, our budget workshop, June the twentieth, the regular session, June the twenty-ninth, two thousand and twenty-two, special minutes.
Move to approve. Second.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
She just got a few more, they'll be called up that next night.
Budget meetings always get, they get back good.
Three point eight, our agenda consent items, we had a lot in that, and I'm sure everybody's read it. So, do we have any questions or any concerns? If not, our consent item is adopted by consent. Three point nine, informational items, do we have anything that the board or anyone wants to speak about on the informational items? Three point ten, we do have a meeting for August the fifteenth, but the board will be gone to the NCAA, and we won't be back until the thirteenth, so we probably will not need August the fifteenth meeting.
I, I think that we pretty well covered everything, I think the fifteenth we can cancel, because we will be gone the eleventh through the thirteenth, and that would be the time that I would need to be going to the agenda, to the county commissioners conference. If that's okay with the board, we'll go ahead and cancel that.
And so, we'll be leaving on Wednesday morning, is that right?
Thursday.
Thursday morning at six o'clock, being by wants go. Did you know that? Did you? Okay.
We'll be ready.
Well, this is.
If somebody will predict the traffic.
End of our meeting, does anybody have any questions or concerns? Nothing else? We will adjourn then.